Now seven o'clock and we will call this meeting to order. And we will begin with the pledge of allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Sextro?
Here.
Ms. McDaniel?
Here.
Mr. Putoff?
Here.
Ms. Lyderson?
Here.
Mr. Patterson?
Here.
Mr. Burke?
Here. Okay, we have some guests with us tonight. We have... Pat Haslett, is Pat here? There you are, come on up. We have a proclamation for you tonight in honor of all of your work in service to the citizens of Cincinnati. So, can you read that tonight? Okay. It's in appreciation of the village of Evendale, Pat Haslett, for our years of service in the Evendale Cultural Arts Commission. Whereas Pat Haslett, a resident of Evendale since 1983, has served the village of Evendale with distinction as a founder of the cultural arts commission and longtime art instructor at the Village Cultural Arts Center for two decades. Whereas Pat has played a pivotal role in establishing the village's Evendale Fine Arts exhibit, collecting, collaborating with Mark DeComity to present the concept David Nichols at the Recreation Center and securing initial funding and approval for the assumed event. Whereas Pat has dedicated, has dedication to excellence of the art in the arts. It's exemplified by her involvement in curating high caliber jury art shows featuring renowned artists such as Chris Payne and Joyce Coles Young and have elevated Evendale's standing with the arts community in Cincinnati. Whereas Pat embarked on her artistic journey pre-retirement, post-retirement, studying under the current paper's pastry and subsequently transitioning from student to instructor, becoming one of the original and long disturbing teachers in the village of Evendale. Whereas Pat meticulously, meticulous attention to detail is legendary, evidenced by her reputation as the queen of things. And her remarkable foresight in planning her outfits for the Evendale Fine Arts exhibit as early as January for the May event, setting a standard of professionalism and dedication to the local arts commission. Whereas Pat has influenced, she's influence go to the one of those, evidenced by her son, Dr. Andrew Heffler, now a full professor of American art history and reflecting the family's enduring commitment to arts and education. Whereas Pat, Pat's artistic talents have been recognized through awards, including auto mention in the Evendale Fine Arts exhibit, and teaching has inspired and retained numerous long-term students. Whereas Pat has contributed to Evendale's artistic landscape, including bringing international acclaimed artists such as Niva Leal to our community, broadening the local exposure to the Russian artistic techniques and perspectives. Whereas is appropriate at this time towards all citizens joining, recognizing and celebrating Pat's extraordinary contributions to our community artistic and cultural life, her unwavering dedication to arts education and her instrumental role in establishing Evendale as a beacon of artistic excellence in the great Cincinnati and New York. We stand our heartfelt gratitude and best wishes to being begin to a new adventure, knowing the impact our community will have for years to come. Thank you very much.
At last I can... If I really would never expect it in my life that I would give my community life as Evendale's, totally agree. And let me confess, I didn't do it. I truly...
You've done it very well there. You want to take a look at here?
Oh, we'll take a look.
It's a good guess.
Well, to me, even though the council was all along, like some of the other officers, and negotiations and...
It's a real quick time.
It's a real good art.
Thank you. There's, there's...
Thank you. Now, we have another visitor tonight from the Cincinnati Public Library, Saobhan Lihota.
I think he just...
Did I mess it up really bad?
It's fine, it's Irish, so it's a little, you know...
Yeah, how would you pronounce it?
Siobhan.
Okay.
Siobhan.
Shalan?
Siobhan.
Shalan.
Yep, yep. That's really something to follow after that. So I just wanted to introduce myself. My name is Siobhan, I'm one of the librarians at the Sharonville Branch Library. I've been coming to meetings for a few months and I figured it was finally time to introduce myself. Another kudos to the Evendale Cultural Arts Center because we were invited to participate, have a little table at the Evendale Big Art Party, which was awesome. I got to meet so many different residents and chat with people about the library and about Evendale, which was really great. So I just wanted to take a quick moment just to introduce myself, thank Evendale for your support of our library, and then just offer my support in any way that you might need it in the future. If there's anything that the library can do to support Evendale, please let me know. I would love to be able to do that, partner some more.
How long have you been with the library?
I've worked at the Sharonville Library for 12 years, so, yeah.
And how long in Sharonville?
For the whole 12 years.
The whole time?
Yeah, yeah. I moved here from Pennsylvania, so...
Very good.
Yeah. It's a great community.
Well, thank you.
Yes, thank you for having me.
Thanks very much. All right, now we'll go on to our consent calendar. The first question is, the minutes of the previous meeting have been distributed. Is there any additions, corrections, or changes? If not, can I have a motion to accept the minutes?
Second.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Putoff?
Yes.
McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Ms. Lyderson?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Now we'll go to the committee meetings and the Finance Committee is first.
Okay. Finance update, tax receipts for the month of August were 1.3 million and were higher than tax receipts for August 2023 by over $100,000. Year-to-date tax receipts total 14 million and are up just under 2 million over this time last year. VOE results expenditures exceeded receipts in the month of May, I mean month of August, 100, I, 1,075,000. However, year-to-date receipts still exceed expenditures by three, just over 3 million. And we have an easy agreement with Enable Injections and recently, but we're going to talk about that right now.
Yeah.
Okay, so, but it's, we'll get into that with the ordinance that we're gonna, or the message we're gonna cover.
Yes, we'll talk about that.
Hamilton County approved the tax budget and the rates will be accepted in October. Gorman Heritage Farm, farm update, working on executive research, uh, search for director. And then Row by Row was, was a great success and they exceeded their goal for income. Recreation Oxford Blood Drive, we apologize, but it had to be canceled because of the mobile vehicle breakdown and it will be rescheduled. Part-time hire for children's programs are going on. Online registration went live and went smoothly, so kudos to the team for making it all work out. Pool session, I, season went well and pleased with, with SwimSafe. Surface engineering, Evendale Commons Pond sidewalk being poured, 250 tons of salt being delivered to help us for the winter. Hopefully, we won't need as much. Leaf bags distribution are taking place in the month of October. And then fire department garage doors have been finished and services department building in progress and drone photos are available. Met with the agricultural architect for the elevator bid in, in 2024. And then Naturscape project in Gorman Heritage Farm is moving along. Continue to meet with Metro and the Mill Creek Alliance. And Park Hills, if you live in Park Hills and or Carpenters Creek, the entrance will be closed for two weeks sometime during the month of Oc- October. We don't have a start date yet, but we will update you. And other businesses, there'll be ordinance being covered.
Any questions, comments? Okay, let's go to police and fire.
Okay, I'm gonna start with fire at this point. Captain Lehman represented the fire department at the meeting and he reported that the feasibility study is still in preliminary stages, but it's being reviewed by selected fire department personnel. The ambulance committee is looking at a Ford chassis and a Horton box for the new ambulance. The projected estimate is $425,000 with a 24-month build-out. And a contract for it would need to be signed in January of 2025. And on the new fire engine, three companies were evaluated for the new truck. Suffolk is the preferred vendor at an estimated cost of 1.25 million. And we currently have 775,000 in the fire services fund that can be used towards this purchase, though financing options are still being evaluated. The expectation is that contracts will be finalized in the next three to four weeks. And last week, several reps from the fire department went to the Suffolk plant to, to look at the prospects. So, you knew that before because I actually looked at my June council report and we talked about it. And the ambulance is still within the range that we talked about back in June, so that's good news. On the police side, Chief Holloway reported on two credit card scammer situations that recently occurred in the village. One was at the Asian Market and the scammer was found at the checkout register and was in place less than 24 hours before it was discovered. Suspects who were arrested in the Newark, Ohio area, charges are still under investigation as to what will be pursued there. And the other was found at GE Credit Union. The scam was inside, an ATM inside the building for about 24 hours. A possible suspect vehicle has been identified, but the investigation is still ongoing. Chief made some suggestions, a couple of suggestions to be considered to avoid being a victim of these types of scams. Specifically, I think when you go to use, to purchase gas, to use the tap card option, if you have that available to you versus inserting your card actually in the device or just going inside and paying for a certain amount. So that was his report. Now Lieutenant Tickmeyer was there and he's here, so if we need to ask him questions, we shall. He distributed and presented a summary of a comparison study that he conducted on the best option for replacing our body cameras and cruiser cameras in the police department. Three manufacturers were evaluated, being Motorola, Axon, and Ipro, was formerly known as Panasonic. So the factors assessed included the cost, quality of equipment, plan features, our experience with the manufacturer, reviews of other departments using the equipment, ability to integrate with other platforms, for example, flock cameras, and ease of use and responsiveness of the manufacturer representatives. So, all quotes that were received include, were for eight cruiser cameras, including installation, and nine body cameras. And all the necessary hardware, software, department training, as well as providing warranties of three to five years, depending on which manufacturer, and unlimited cloud storage. After discussion, there was a recommendation. The recommendation was to go with the Axon option for various reasons. One, they refresh their commitment, it's a five-year contract that's being offered and they will refresh equipment within that five-year period. So that was one plus. The experience that other departments had, interoperability again with platforms such as flock cameras, the personnel cost savings surrounding, things like public records requests that could, could be minimized. And department expertise with quick turnaround for our tasers for which Axon is currently the vendor. So that was the experience that we had with this vendor. So we have an ordinance on the agenda for the mayor to enter into contract with them this evening. The committee agreed with the recommendation, it was a very thorough report and all council members, may or may not have missed this, I gave, made sure every council member had a copy of the report. So, any questions?
So it's limited to 21 users, is we gonna need that? We won't use, sorry.
We have the right person here.
Get to the microphone, please.
So the, the limited, the other two are unlimited and this one's limited to 21. Were we even gonna be close to that?
We currently have 20 sworn and we have an extra spot for one of our clerks or a shared account for our clerks to be able to help with redaction if need be. We only technically need 20, we just have that extra as a, a catch-all.
So is there any room for negotiating with them for a couple of other backups or not?
If we end up needing more, they're very flexible. My experience has been great with them. The initial quote that I had from them didn't have unlimited data and the rep flat out told me, if you guys go over your data, we're not gonna charge you more. We're just gonna reassess that at five years and say, hey, this is the actual amount that you're using. So Axon has been great to work with, with our tasers. Anytime that I've had a contact with them, they've been quick to answer anything. They've, they've been more than helpful.
Okay, thank you. I think it's also, it's interesting that you can't buy these, you have to rent them now. Is that correct?
Correct, everybody's going to a, a subscription-based platform. When we first got body cameras, we started off with purchasing the equipment. We kept all the data locally and that's just kind of a thing of the past now. Everybody wants a subscription because it helps the companies continue to make a lot of money.
Mm-hmm. And I also found it interesting what, what you have to go through if you get a request for the stuff on the camera. Can you just go a little bit about that?
So when we have public records requests, we have to go through the video and redact certain things. So we have to redact faces of people who are not involved that happen to be on the camera. Depending on the, the people involved, their age, we have to redact that kind of stuff. If names are said, license plates are shown, all that kind of stuff, we have to go through and do a redaction. So currently, and all three manufacturers have a basic platform where you kind of have to go frame by frame. There is an easier way, there is an AI option now which helps. You know, you can say, hey, blur out every time this face shows up and the software will do that automatically. But it is very time-consuming, depending on how much, how long the video is and how much it's showing. Even just sitting in the cruiser, as the officer is sitting in the cruiser, if it's recording, if it's recording the computer, that has to be redacted. So every time they get in and out of the car, we have to blur that out. It's very time-consuming and it's a thing that's becoming more frequent for the public records request.
In terms of time, what's, what are you, four hours, five hours?
We had requests for, I forget how many different crimes, ended up being something like eight videos and I've spent, I think it was 15 to 20 hours working on it. It, it is a lot of time.
People don't realize that. People don't realize what it takes on the redaction.
It, it really does. And you have to watch the video completely multiple times. So if it's a 45-minute video, you're watching it initially to blur out everything. Then you're watching it and listening to it to make sure that anything is said is okay to be released. And then you have to watch it again to make sure that you didn't miss anything. So it takes a whole lot of time.
Thank you.
Take a second, if you would, and talk about the current state of our hardware right now. Because what you said, what you said during the meeting surprised me about how many cruiser cams are actually operable, how many body cameras have been breaking down. If you just roll through that for a second and talk about where we are right now relative to what we're getting involved with.
So we currently have eight cruisers. We have one cruiser cam that operates all the time. It is our newest one, it's the only one that's been replaced and I don't even know how long. The rest of them, some of them work sometimes, some of them don't work at all. A couple of cars don't have a camera in there at all. That vendor is a vendor that we considered a while ago to stay with just because the durability of their equipment was great. However, their most recent camera, which is only a couple of years old, we've not had great success with. As for the body cameras, I'm sorry, those cruiser cameras are probably 12 to 13 years old, most of them. So we definitely got plenty of use out of those. Our body cameras, we currently have 10. Out of those 10, I've had to send back, I think, almost every one of them. I think there's one I may not have sent back and I'm pretty sure it's sitting on my desk right now to be sent back. Some of them have had to be sent back multiple times. And the issue is always something to do with the way they record. So we get an error flashing that says video error or something along those lines. Best-case scenario, we've had that happens when it's not recording, so we're not losing video. I've also had where we've done, we do a random review of body camera every month. When I've gone back and done that random review, we have a camera or two that for whatever reason just puts a green shadow over everything. And it makes it very difficult to see what's going on, especially at night. I've had, I've been able to exchange those cameras, but it has not been the easiest process.
This is with Axon?
That is with Motorola, who we currently have for our body cameras. Axon, our experience with them has been with TASER. Anytime I've had an issue with the TASER, send it back. They're quick to turn it back around, very responsive. Our sales rep is very responsible, responsive and I realize that she's trying to sell us something, but she's doing a great job. And there are a lot of departments around us that have gone to Axon and they're all extremely happy with it.
And that's, that's who we're going with tonight, am I correct?
Correct, Axon.
Did a great job with the sun.
Yes.
Thank you.
I, I just thought a little explanation of what goes on with these cameras. People think you just get a body camera and get some pictures.
Right, and these, Axon has been great with their technology, that, you know, they're, they're staying up to date. These cameras are all, both the body camera and the car camera have been recently released in the past year, I believe. And at year two and a half of the contract, we will get all new body cameras. At year five, we will get all new cruiser cameras. So that's already built into the cost, which was a, a great benefit. And then also the fact that they interface with flock, which we've had huge success for with, with our current cameras. So that, that'll be a huge plus.
And who's having, who's asking for the copy, the public record copies? A person involved or?
There are attorneys that will ask for it, which, it's different if it's an attorney for, you know, their client, but there are attorneys that are looking for clients that'll ask for it. The one that took me, that I had to go through all the different crimes was for a YouTube channel that are trying to make money off of our videos. And, you know, if they want the videos, we, we'll give them the videos. It just, it takes time and, you know, effort and money.
Thank you very much.
One of the things to remember about this is that increasingly in this world, video, both body cam and cruiser cam are the ways that municipalities protect themselves.
That's right.
And they protect their officers. It is now becoming the required standard if people ask for what happened rather than somebody's verbal memory of or recounting of something. And this is something we absolutely cannot scrimp on. This is only gonna get, this is only gonna get more important with time and having this in place now is a, is a really big deal, not a little deal.
Absolutely.
Exactly. Thank you, officer.
Thank you.
Thank you. I, I just have a couple of things, wondering why?
I haven't actually, that was just...
Oh, I'm sorry. Come back.
No, no, I'm finished with the police, thank you again for that. For cultural arts, the photo exhibit entries closed on Friday and I think at our meeting, there had been 180 entries at that point. The final number was 318, got jury today and the final selection has 98. It will actually be in the exhibit. Summer camps did really well this year. The Tri-County Players will be presenting the Miss Magnolia Senior Citizen Beauty Pageant on September 20th through 22nd and 27th and 28th. I refer you to the, to the cultural arts website for the specific times of the showing at, at the Bell Tower Arts Pavilion. And new sessions of classes started this week. And I think that's it for cultural arts. I'm not mentioning wine tasting just because we believe it's already sold out, as is our norm. For building planning and zoning, Mark was not able to attend the meeting, but there were a couple of items I want to mention that he and I've exchanged messages about. For code enforcement, there were eight new code enforcement violations issued for the month of August. Many of these were minor commercial infractions that have been resolved. And then for building permits, the building department received 18 new permit application, issued 10 with an estimated construction cost of $1,169,732 and some change. And building permit activity at General Electric remains strong as they continue to try to improve their campus. And that's our report, any questions?
Any questions, comments? Okay, I have a, just a couple of things. I want to remind people that Halloween Trick or Treat will be October 31st from 6 to 8 o'clock. Everybody wants to put that on, put that on their calendar. The fire department has asked to have one hour of our time to discuss the strategic plan that has been worked on by the planning people. I thought that if we could do it between committee meetings, one of these are in October, if that agrees with you all. But I think we should move the times. I suggest that we start the committee, the first committee, Finance Committee, at, what do I have it here? 4 o'clock. And that the second committee will start at 6 o'clock. That'll give us probably about an hour. That'll give us probably about an hour in there for the presentation and the chief assures me that that should cover it. I think the chief will cut them off if they're not done at that time. If that is agreeable to you, we'll schedule that then at those times when they're... I also want to note that we had an occurrence where Enable Injections had failed to file some paperwork relative to their EZA response. We were given in 2016 a 75% tax reduction by the school and that, but they didn't file the paperwork until very recently. So we had, went back and forth with our attorneys and they determined that we owed for 2019 to 2025, I believe, is what we owe for. So I gave a check this morning to the superintendent, Mr. Card, for about $72,000, was it?
$78,000.
$78,000 for the first installment, which we had budgeted for this year. And then we'll budget the rest of it next year. Will be 213, someplace around there. We'll budget that in next year's budget and that will give them that. And he seemed to be acceptable to that, to that set of terms as far as we're concerned. So that's pretty much what I have on the agenda. Any questions?
Once again, there's no penalty or interest being paid on that, right?
No, no penalty, no interest. And we are not paying for the first one or two years, I think, that we escape. But those are small amounts. They're $2,000, $3,000 in that time. So we're making the school district pretty well whole out of the whole thing, okay? All right, let's go to the ordinances on the agenda tonight. And first we have ordinance 24... The first three ordinances are on tonight for second and third reading and they're part of the zoning changes that we had the first hearing last month. So you'll find them familiar. Ordinance 24-36, and I ask permission to read it by title only.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff.
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Smithy Robinson.
Yes.
Yes.
Ordinance amending certain sections of Chapter 1242 and 1256 of the Evendale Zoning Code to clarify that, clarify the laboratory, product, research, and development centers' definition and to add regulations to the facility that incorporation, the incorporation of a Phase 2 into Arrow Hub South PUD and declaring it as an emergency. I need a motion to read it to suspend the second and third reading of the ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Patterson.
Yes.
Mr. Smithy Robinson.
Yes.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff.
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel.
Yes.
Now I need a motion to adopt the emergency clause of the ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff.
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Smithy Robinson.
Yes.
Mr. Patterson.
Yes.
And I need a motion to adopt the ordinance as an emergency.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Patterson.
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff.
Yes.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Smithy Robinson.
Yes.
Now I declare ordinance 24-36 adopted as an emergency. Next is ordinance 24-37. I need permission to read it by title only.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Patterson.
Yes.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff.
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Smithy Robinson.
Yes.
And ordinance amending the official zoning map of the village of Evendale to change parts of the HC Heavy Commercial and the IF-2 Industrial Flex 2 zoning districts to a PUD-ID Innovation District, PUD zoning designation on certain properties and declaring it as an emergency. I need a motion to suspend the second and third reading of the ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Smithy Robinson.
Yes.
Mr. Patterson.
Yes.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Pudoff.
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel.
Yes.
Now I need a motion to adopt the ordinance as an emergency.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff.
Yes.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Smithy Robinson.
Yes.
Mr. Patterson.
Yes.
I now need a motion to adopt the ordinance as an emergency.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff.
Yes.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Patterson.
Yes.
I now declare ordinance 24-37 adopted as an emergency. Next is ordinance 24-38, and I need permission to read it by title only.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff.
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Smithy Robinson.
Yes.
Mr. Patterson.
Yes.
Ordinance amending the Arrow Hub South preliminary and final development plan to add an addendum concerning Phase 2 and declaring it as an emergency. I need a motion to suspend the second and third reading of the ordinance.
So moved.
Mr. Patterson.
Yes.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Smithy Robinson.
Yes.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff.
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel.
Yes.
Now I need a motion to adopt the emergency clause of the ordinance.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Smithy Robinson.
Yes.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff.
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Patterson.
Yes.
Now I need a motion to adopt the ordinance as an emergency.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Patterson.
Yes.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Smithy Robinson.
Yes.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff.
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Patterson.
Now I declare ordinance 24-38 adopted as an emergency and that should complete the rezoning of... Next is ordinance 24-48. I'd like permission to read it by title only.
So moved. Second.
Is that Mr. Sextro?
Yes, it was.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff.
Yes.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Smithy Robinson.
Yes.
Mr. Patterson.
Yes.
Mr. Patterson.
Yes.
Mr. Patterson.
Now I need a motion to adopt the emergency clause of the ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Patterson.
Yes.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff.
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Patterson.
Yes.
An ordinance authorizing and directing the law director to initiate suit for preliminary and permanent injunction regarding ongoing zoning and property maintenance code violations at 9972 Redding Road and declaring it as an emergency. This is commonly known as the Homer's Property and this authorizes the law director to proceed with a lawsuit. A comment, please?
Yes.
A comment, please, Court?
Yes.
Right. So I would like to suspend the second and third reading of the ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Patterson.
Yes.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Pudoff.
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel.
Yes.
Yes.
Now I declare ordinance 24-48 adopted as an emergency. Is he gonna get a surprise in the morning? Next is ordinance 24-49. I'd like a motion to read it by title only.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Patterson.
Yes.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff.
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Smithy Robinson.
Yes.
A motion or an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a lease agreement with Angel Area Systems and declaring it as an emergency. This is a prospective tenant for the building we bought over on...
Spartan Drive.
Spartan Drive.
Spartan Drive.
Spartan Drive. We have, this is a company that makes drones, very interesting company. I think they'll be a great attraction to the village and perhaps grow with us as they get bigger. This simply authorizes me to enter into a contract to, for that, Mr. Pudoff.
Just a clarification. Is this, we had initially talked about possibly having multiple tenants in that facility. Is this all of the building or is this a part of the building?
This is just about one-third of the building, I'd say. The other two-thirds are, some will be for common area space and we maybe have one or two other renters in the rest of the building.
This is for 2,300 feet.
Thank you.
2,300.
I'm sorry?
It's 2,300 square feet, this company.
That's right, 2,300 square feet. Okay, now I need a motion to suspend the second and third reading of the ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Mr. Patterson.
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff.
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Smithy Robinson.
Yes.
Now a motion to adopt the emergency clause of the ordinance.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Pudoff.
Yes.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Patterson.
Yes.
Now I need a motion to adopt the ordinance as an emergency.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Smithy Robinson.
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Patterson.
Yes.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel.
Yes.
Now I declare ordinance 24-49 adopted as an emergency. Next we have 20, ordinance 24-50, and I'd like permission to read it by title only.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Pudoff.
Yes.
Mr. Patterson.
Yes.
Mr. Smithy Robinson.
Yes.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel.
Yes.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a client services agreement with Axion Enterprises, Inc., and declaring it as an emergency. This is for the body cameras. Like a motion to suspend the second and third reading of the ordinance.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Smithy Robinson.
Yes.
Mr. Patterson.
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff.
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel.
Yes.
Now I need a motion to adopt the emergency clause of the ordinance.
So moved.
Mr. Smithy Robinson.
Yes.
Is that Mr. Patterson?
Patterson.
Yes.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff.
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel.
Yes.
Now I need a motion to adopt the ordinance as an emergency.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff.
Yes.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Patterson.
Yes.
I now declare ordinance 24-50 adopted as an emergency. Next we have ordinance 24-51. Need a motion to read it by title only.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Patterson.
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff.
Yes.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Smithy Robinson.
Yes.
Ordinance making appointment to the Planning Commission in the village of Evendale and declaring it as an emergency. You want to comment on that, Mr.?
I am delighted. I've been at, Chris Tony has been a longtime resident of the village. A lot of you know him. He's been active in our homeowners association. He's had people on the swim team. He's well-known. I was able to corral him and threaten his life and do all sorts of things, but he subsequently agreed and we're delighted to have him join us.
With that, we will have a motion to suspend the second and third reading of the ordinance.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff.
Yes.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Patterson.
Yes.
Now a motion to adopt the emergency clause of the ordinance.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Smithy Robinson.
Yes.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff.
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Patterson.
Yes.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Smithy Robinson.
Yes.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff.
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel.
Yes.
I now declare ordinance 24-51 adopted as an emergency. Next we have ordinance 24-52. I need a motion to read it by title only.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff.
Yes.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Smithy Robinson.
Yes.
Mr. Patterson.
Yes.
Ordinance authorizing the mayor to hire Kayla Rogan as a part-time recreation specialist one for the recreation department and declaring it as an emergency. I need a motion to suspend the second and third reading of the ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff.
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Patterson.
Yes.
Now I need a motion to adopt the emergency clause of the ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Patterson.
Yes.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff.
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Smithy Robinson.
Yes.
Now I need a motion to adopt the ordinance as an emergency.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Patterson.
Mr. Burke.
Oh, Mr. Burke, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Mr. Burke, Mr. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff.
Yes.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Mr. Smithy Robinson.
Yes.
Mr. Patterson.
Yes.
Now I declare ordinance 24-52 adopted as an emergency. Is there any other business to come before, Council?
Yes, I just wanted to mention that Councilman Burke and I attended the Princeton City School District Community Officials Night last Friday.
Oh, good.
So we were there and they won. Is there a correlation?
I unfortunately was unable to attend that. I had seven teeth removed the day before, so.
I still think they're the only community that does that.
What?
I think they're the only school system that does that.
Yeah.
I think it's really neat that they do.
And they went back to introducing us by name, too.
Oh, really?
Yes.
Superintendent told me today that they're going to ask for a five mil levy in November. So put that in your keeper bag. Anything else before the Council? May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Patterson.
Yes.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff.
Yes.
Mr. Smithy Robinson.
Yes.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.